We continue to be grateful and thankful for the blessings you've bestowed upon us and for all the opportunities that exist here in Montgomery County. Thank you for continuing to guide and direct our citizens towards you so that we can live your gospel values in our lives each day. Thank you for these commissioners, for the volunteers, the staff, and all those who support the efforts of this commission we had at our meeting today. Glory to you, we pray in your holy son's name. Amen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Scheduled attendees today: County Engineer George Speak, HMFI Director Eris Beasley with the District Attorney's Office, Executive Director Charity Alpert with Court Appointed Special Advocates CASA, Frank Robinson, Nicole Thompson, and Jennifer Anderson with the City of Montgomery Small Business Initiative, Mediator Carlton Avery with Avery Mediation Services. Items to be considered this morning in the formal session. Item number three, consider Old Home Place Plaid Number One, O'McGee Road at Butler Mill Road. Consider approval of Rebuild Alabama Act Annual Grant Application with ALDOT for resurfacing Jackson Ferry Road. Consider Amendment Number Two to Contract with Industry Standard LLC to extend contract until June 1st, 2025. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Are there any additions?
Yes, I have one, 5,000 to the Rosa Parks Museum.
You gotta be careful what you click on this.
Oh, Lord have mercy. Who the chairman of 50 cent fan? Look at him. Won't God do it?
I didn't know that was 50 cents. I'm glad, I'm glad I didn't hit no dollar in that thing.
Are there any other additions? Consider miscellaneous appropriation to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to designated revenue. Consider travel training requests from the Commission, Community Corrections, Detention, Engineering, Probate, Sheriff's Office, and the Youth Facility Court. All right, on our information session this morning, starting with item number one, County Engineer George Speak.
Good morning. So item number one, that's an agreement with ALDOT for resurfacing Felder Road from Wazin Road to US 80. And it's an MPO project, total cost is about $837,000. It's 80/20 split, and 80% MPO funds, 20% local match. And the local match is $167,000, and we've got that budgeted in our budget, so recommend approval for next agenda.
Okay, any questions about that? That'd be next agenda.
All right. Item number two, consider resolution for resurfacing Trotman Road from Woodley Road, 2.6 miles east to US 231.
That's a 2026 MPO project, and the, with the resolution will get the process started, and we're shooting for February of '26 letting on that project. It's an MPO project.
And then that'd be next agenda, then the same thing on number three?
Same on, same on number three, MPO project, Marla Road from 110 up to 80.
That'll be next agenda.
Item number four, consider budgeted position change.
See, item number four, we've got an employee at our sand shop. We would like to promote from a traffic control technician one to a traffic control technician two. He's taken initiative to get his CDL license with the tank endorsement, and he's passed his exams for his commercial pesticide applicator permit, which both of those we need for handling those herbicide chemicals, restricted chemicals, and operation of our spray truck for roadside vegetation management.
That's a net budget savings.
Yes, sir. Sharon, I'm a little bit confused. Why, why are you asking us about a promotion? Why, why can't you just promote the person? If the person is a one, and you already have an operator two position, why can't you just promote them?
What we'd have to do is delete his one slot and add a two slot.
Why would you have to delete his one spot?
We don't have a two slot available.
You don't have a two slot?
No, we, we would have, we, no, we'd, we'd, we're just asking to delete his, take one slot.
And make it a two slot?
Make it a two slot. And it costs about $3,000. And we, with the.
How many, how many two slots do you have, George?
Let me see, right now we've got one two slot and one three slot.
So you didn't expect to have, ever have, these people to ever get promoted, huh?
Um.
The person in the one.
Well, we had, we had an employee that retired, and.
I mean, but it just, see, I don't understand, you got people working on the job trying to do their best and get promoted, and there's nowhere to go. You have to come to the commission and ask for a spot for them to go to. I mean, I don't understand that at all. There should be room in your budget and in your job assignments so that when a person merits a promotion, they can get it. I just, you know, you've never had more than two, two people in that number two spot? More than one?
No, no, sir.
Geez. I mean, I'm all for a person getting promoted, but I just, when I read that, I'm trying to figure out, why does he need to come to the commission and ask to promote somebody?
Um, I guess if you kind of compare it to the military, like a second lieutenant, he can go, he can go into a first lieutenant slot, i- if there's a slot, but otherwise.
I guarantee you, when that person comes out of school and goes into the first, to a second lieutenant, they got a second, a first lieutenant spot waiting on that person as soon as they qualify for it.
Right, and that, that's similar to this.
They don't have to go to the squadron commander to ask for it. I mean, to the, to the, to the wing commander to ask for it. Squadron commander can do the promotion. You're the squadron commander. We're the wing commander. But anyway, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I just think something needs to be looked at. If that's, if you're that tight that you can't promote a person that's deserving without coming to us and asking us for another job, and to do away with one job and to create another job to promote a person, it just doesn't sound right.
It would be great now if we could do that. You know, my, you know, maybe we could talk with the new personnel, people that we have, and.
Yeah, it just doesn't sound right, I mean, to, to be stuck in a spot like that. You know, I, I mean, the, the impact on the budget is negative, and really, I'm, that's not, I don't, I'm not concerned with that part. Just the part that, you know, you should be able, you should be in a position where somebody's qualified to be promoted, promote them.
So, I, any other questions for George? That'd be next agenda. George, give us a quick update on the damage from the tornado.
So we had, we had hit District Two Camp out there and blew, blew the roof off of two buildings, turned over our generator, and blew the, got a, got a little small building where we put oil and fuel, blew it over. And we're assessing the damage now, see if we want to repair it, or how, how much it's going to cost, and we're working with Melissa on it. But luckily it didn't damage the main office that we work out of, so we can keep functioning, and I don't know if we're trying to, we just have to look at the costs and see if it's.
Yeah, look at the costs, we, we had talked about relocating anyway.
That's right, so we wouldn't want to spend.
Might be the time to do it.
Wouldn't want to spend a whole lot of money, but if we can patch it up to, to we can get us a place, but we'll, 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 no more on it after the day when I get finished the session.
Thank you, I know we talked Sunday morning, early Sunday morning, you had your crews out there taking trees off of roads and everything else, so thank you.
Yeah, we had a lot of trees down, so down around Snowdon, Woodley Road, Vanderbilt, Franklin, Morris, had about 15 trees total down there, plus, I think it was one on Flowers and Ryan Road and several other low catching, but they were out just about the whole holiday with storm damage.
Thank you, George.
Okay.
Mr. Speak, can you hold up for one second?
Item number five, consider sale of 6.6 acre lot at the Montgomery County Industrial Park East.
Good morning, everyone. Just want to let you know that on this agenda item, Lauter Development had contacted Mr. Speak about purchasing some of the property at Montgomery Industrial Park East. It's approximately 6.6 acres. In preparation for this, we requested that we get the fair market value of the property, and the appraisal was done and paid for, or was done by a third party but paid for by Lauter, so we didn't pay anything out of that, just want to let you know that. The property, even though it's 6.6 acres, and you have it, can you scroll down to the aerial map so you can see where, show you guys where it is? That's at the entrance to the industrial park that borders Stony Brook, and that part that is outlined in red is the parcel in question, and the road coming in is the access road to the industrial park. So if you can go down to the next one, please. That's a, a different view, and you can see it on yours. Yeah, go down to the, can you see the little pins right there? Yeah. So you can see it, it's at a different view, and you can see what is owned by the commission, and you can see where Stony Brook is. The louder, if you can see, the new louder residential subdivision, what they're trying to do is they're trying to develop that subdivision. The problem is, is they don't have the ability to disperse any water any other way, so they want to purchase this property, which would allow them to get to the drainage easement that takes it out so they can develop that property. We had the, no, we didn't have it, they had the appraisal done, and the appraisal came back at fair market value at $75,000. Now, the property, even though it's 6.6 acres, 3.8 acres is wetlands, 1.8 acres is building line acreage, and what that means is that right next to the property line, you can't build in that area, so that amount of unusable acreage is 1.8. Then you have .3 acres that is a drainage easement, so out of the 6.6 acres that's there, only .7 acres is actually usable, and that would take some work by us to do that. George knows more about it, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention and your consideration to give you as much information as possible.
Yeah, it's land that the county owns that basically we just maintain it, and we never could do anything with it, and then Lauter has, because they, like you said, they could use it for the easements and all, so. Any questions for George or Michael on that?
And you say that part of the process for Lauter to develop that subdivision is to have somewhere for the drainage to go to?
Yes, sir. If you'll, if we can go back to the aerial picture where it had the pins on it showing where, the next one. George, will you speak to this?
Drains our industrial park, and that ditch, I've checked it, it'll handle a hundred year flood, so it's.
It's not going to affect.
It's no, it's no problem. If they want to dump it straight into it, it's fine with us.
It's not going to affect us.
They won't affect our, plus, like Mike was saying, there's some wetlands down at the bottom of the hill, there's, there's, you can't do anything, basically. I mean, if you disturb wetlands, you got to create twice as much wet, more wetlands than you, thirty, thirty core engineers have mitigation on it. So that's unusable, and the ditch, the hundred year flood hazard area is right along that concrete ditch that runs from Tureen on northward into the swamp, north of our industrial park.
So the retention bond has no impact.
This is the year, this is the year of the hundred year flood, you know that, don't you?
The, the detention bond won't, it won't, it, there won't be any impact. If they put the pond in it, there won't be any additional water going into our ditch, but even if it did, it would handle it, the ditch would handle.
Yeah, nobody would ever have any use for this, the county doesn't, and the person that would ever have is whoever developed that neighborhood, so this is just property, we, we're having to cut now, we're having to pay to cut it and keep it up, so it's, it's a win for us on both ends.
As long as the runoff's not headed for us and.
Yeah, no, my office is out there, and we've never had any, that, that huge ditch, we've never had any flooding.
Yeah, that, that ditch is designed for a hundred year, so we're not only designing on a 25 year storm, but that ditch is designed on a hundred year.
I've never seen water hardly in it, yeah.
Right, 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 it'll handle the runoff.
George, who owns that road that goes through there?
Industrial Park Boulevard, that's, that's our road.
That's county?
Yes, sir, that's, we maintain that road.
Are they going to be seeking any kind of new access to this property at all once they purchase it?
No, we, we put a, we would want to put a stipulation they can't access.
Yeah, they would access from their side where they're going to implement the, the new subdivision where they'll create, create it, that's my understanding, and like George said, we'll put a stipulation in there that there's no access from our road.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think it's a win, as long as we prevent that, I think it's a win.
And $75,000 is fair market value?
Yes, sir. The, I can give you, I've got the full appraisal, it's 90 something pages, I didn't think you guys would want it, but, but I did, I did, I didn't print it out for you, but I've got it in the, in the package, and it's like anything else, when you get an appraisal, the, the value that is assessed to it is usually in the first few pages, so you should be able to see it in the, in the first couple pages.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be next agenda, thanks, George.
Okay, thank you.
Item number six, consider resolution to adopt procedures for public records request.
All right, good morning again. Act number 2024-278 that was passed by the Alabama Legislature, I've given you a copy of some things that we've developed, including a flow chart, a resolution that puts public officers, this is for open records, so if somebody makes a request for open records in the state of Alabama, Alabama Legislature has designated a uniform policy, and this policy right here will conform to the act and bring us in compliance. We haven't really had that many open records requests since this was put in, but we went ahead and got this, want to get it taken care of, because we did get one in that we're waiting to fill, we just want to go ahead and adopt this uniform policy that has been implemented by the, by the state of Alabama. And I've got you two resolutions in there, one adopts policy procedure, one adopts putting two people as a public officer to be contacted to respond, and then, and the other, other stuff we've got is I've drafted form letters and things like that for them to utilize under different circumstances.
Would Regina and Tammy naturally be the two folks, are they already doing this? Is this just formalize it, or?
Well, this would formalize it, but they wouldn't necessarily have to do it all, they would just have to coordinate it. So if it's, let's just say this was in the probate office, they would get with somebody from the probate office, gather the information, and then make sure it got to the right person anytime and manner.
Any other questions on that? I mean, next agenda.
Item number seven, consider county levies for alcohol licensing for 2025, 2026.
That'd be next agenda.
Item number eight, consider reappointment of Kendall Anderson to the Montgomery County Community Local Redevelopment Authority.
Um, can we check on, because I got a thing, Jonathan, does Jonathan still live in Montgomery? I was told he didn't live in Montgomery anymore.
We can check on that.
Can we check on that? I was told he, he got a new job, and I'm happy for him, moved away, but I just wanted to check on it, since he's still on there.
Jonathan Levan?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, he, he was my appointment to that, to that board, I think he lives in Selma now, and doesn't have enough time.
I was told he moved to hospital recently, got another job off and moved to hospital.
Well, whatever. He, but anyway, I'll look into, to, to replace him on that committee, because I'm, my understanding is he's not, he's not been able to attend the meetings.
We'll look into it.
I haven't had a conversation with him, contacted him.
Yes, sir, will. I'll do such, and we'll get together and figure that out.
You know, is this where you replaced Florence? Is this a?
Um, yes, sir.
Okay. That'd be next agenda.
All right. Consider board appointment, board member reappointment to the Wall Mount Megs Volunteer Fire Protection Authority.
Commissioner Sankey, you okay with that? Alma Bowen?
Hold on, hold on.
Alma Bowen?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she okay with her, she's been on there a long time. That'd be next agenda.
Item number 10, consider board member reappointment to the Pike Road Volunteer Fire Protection Authority.
Any, any questions, comments about that one? They've been on there for a long time, he's done a good job with them. So that'd be next agenda.
All right. HMFI Director Eris Beasley with the District Attorney's Office.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
And thank you so much for having us back, and I must start with just always thanking you all for your continued support of helping Montgomery Families Initiative, our overall program, but today I come needing your assistance with our I-Lee end of the year event, and let me start this. We believe sometimes seeing is believing, so I'm going to have some pictures go through as I just kind of let you know what's happening and what we're doing. I-Lee is our program that we reinstituted last year after COVID, where we are in, right now, 12 elementary fifth grade classes, and if you look on the front page, a color, colored page here, I'm sure there are schools that fall in your districts that are benefiting from our participation. So we have volunteers that come from the DA's office, the Attorney General's office, Montgomery Fire and Rescue, MPD, and a couple other agencies that go weekly or biweekly to institute or to present a 18-week curriculum, and the curriculum goes from order in the court, the rules of law, the juvenile justice system, juvenile corrections, talks about bullying, truancy, staying cool, don't judge a book by its cover, pitfalls, conflict resolution, and at the end they do a marked trial. So these are things as these fifth graders are getting ready to move to middle school and make that transition, that we want to train and give them information to help them be prepared. So what we've done previously, even before COVID, and then again last year, is to sponsor or facilitate this end of the year celebration down at the riverfront. The city is so gracious to allow us to use the riverfront park, they do the boat ride, which is, a lot of these kids have never been on a boat, a boat ride, so it's really exciting, and you'll see some of the pictures that we'll pull through, and you can see the excitement in them. We have the mascots, we had Big Al, Big Mo, we had Albie, we had the Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A cow to come out. We also acknowledge our teachers, because that week is teacher appreciation week, so we try to receive door prizes and, and, and acknowledge the teachers for their hard work, and we just need some financial assistance to make this bigger and better than it was last year. We want to have some gaming trucks. Let me also say that Aleah comes out, the shares the apartment, as well as MPD to do demonstrations. They have the canine dogs, the helicopters, I think even last time they did a, maybe a high-speed chase around the riverfront park, and the kids love that. We have the drones and et cetera. So it's just a fun day for about four hours, from nine to one. MPS facilitates the transportation by way of bus. This year, MPS also provided t-shirts, where last year a lot of our teams came together and put money together to get shirts, so it's really a collective way to acknowledge their completion of the program. So in a nutshell, that's it, and I welcome any questions. I have attached a, a, what we would call a proposed budget, as you see for the Harriet there, last year, few for the two rides was $500, that was an increase based on our, our lunch and what we're doing, that is our amount. We have reached out to Costco, Sam's, and some other businesses in the area for assistance, I will put that out there. We don't know how that will play out, but we're really trying to get as many businesses to assist us. Coca-Cola's on board, they're going to help us with drinks, and as you see.
Ms. Beasley, what is, I know Coke's having you with drinks and bottled water.
Mm-hmm.
Then you have water listed, what's?
Right, and what we learned last year, thank you so much, it was so hot, we didn't have enough water.
Got some more water, okay.
So we're going to make sure we have the small bottles of water and plenty of the canisters around to accommodate. Last year, being our first time back, we learned a lot of lessons, and we're trying to improve. For example, we did two demonstrations, so this time to maximize our time, when all the kids arrive, we'll do the one demonstration and then break into the, the boat ride for one group, and the other group will do the gaming trucks, see the demonstrations and the other activities that will be planned.
So your ask is $6,000 for community services programs?
Right, that, that is what we need, but, and I do want to say, the commission has supported this event in past. Last year, being honest, you know, I'm always transparent, we were a little bit behind the eight ball, and Commissioner Harris did make a donation towards the event last year, but we wanted to come to the whole body today to ask for your assistance.
It's an excellent program. I, I, I remember the early stages, I used, I participated in this program when Darryl started it, and from the very beginning, I saw the, the promise in it, and I think if this is, if this can help to encourage students to participate, if they know there's a reward at the end, and to continue to help grow this, because that is really a delicate time in a child's life, that last year in, in, in moving from elementary school to middle school, that is really vital. That's what we lose a lot of, people don't realize that, but it starts that early, and for us to try to catch them in that last year before middle school was really, I think, a great opportunity for us and for the kids, and it's something that I think we should support.
And we're working on, just to take it a step further, Dr. Williamson, we're working on how as this group completes, how when they get to middle school, we're trying to take it a step further in how we can make them ambassadors at those middle schools that they will attend, having completed I-Lee this year.
Excellent, excellent.
So we're still looking and trying to grow, and let me say, we do invite each of you, if you're, any of your schools on here, please, call me and I can let you know when they meet, and we'd love to have you come as a speaker with them. We, we've had entrepreneurs, the gang unit, as you saw, has come out, I know last week, one of the topics is animal cruelty, there was a representative from the Humane Society that went over to Vaughn Road, so we're always looking for entities to come out and speak with them.
Ms. Beasley?
Yes, sir.
Y'all, y'all didn't do this program last year, did you?
We did, last year.
Well, you came back, you missed it, didn't you miss a year or two?
So what happened was, 2020 COVID hit, we, the team then was in the midst of planning, and of course, everything stopped. So last year was our first time back.
Time coming back, yeah.
And like I said, we learned a lot, it was new for me, but now we know better, we're going to do better, and we're planning better to do more, just to make a wonderful day for, for the children.
And it's great, I mean, the schools you got outlined, participate, I've been there.
And with that, we need some volunteers, we've already, we already have three or four more elementary schools that want us to come next year, and we need, we need the manpower, lay the power, so you all are always welcome.
Well, we'll take it in consideration.
Absolutely.
Definitely get back with you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Executive Director Charity Alpert with Court Appointed Special Advocates CASA.
Good morning, commissioners, how are you guys doing? We really appreciate the time to come back in front of you and update you on how our year went last year. Ryan's our board president for the year, and he's going to hand you a copy of our annual report and our current budget. But just as a little reminder of what we do, we recruit and train community volunteers to advocate. we recruit and train community volunteers to advocate for children in foster care. Uh, so all of our children, um, have a petition of allegations of abuse or neglect. And they are in the court system in some way. And our judges, um, appoint us to cases where they want some extra eyes and ears on the case, basically. So we are growing at a really, um, fast rate as far as the amount of cases that judges want us to be on. Um, if you will look at, I think, the third page, the CASA difference, you will see our numbers in every area, um, have grown significantly from 23 to 24. Um, and this is all based off of community volunteers that just want to give back to their community and come alongside a child. Um, a recent story that I'd like to share with you guys is we had a teen, a foster teen who ran away and who would not be in communication with her caseworker or her, anyone in her life except for her CASA. And she continued to commu- keep communication open with her until the CASA coaxed her to come back. We were able to pick her up and get her back into DHR's custody. So we are able to establish a relationship with these children that they don't get otherwise, um, because we will follow them wherever they go. So through every foster home that they move through, counties all across our state, um, our children are moved a good number of times while they're in care. And so they can, can, you know, unfortunately, DHR has a high level of turnover. And so they might have, like, we have a case going to trial next week where we've had them in care for three years. So they've had 15 or 16 caseworkers and they've had these same CASA that has followed them across the state. So there's just, um, a level of value there that we're able to bring to these children's lives. And it really has seen some amazing outcomes. If you look at the bottom, you see our permanency. So we had 68 children close their cases last year and found permanency. And, uh, the CASA volunteer is able to just bring that information, all of the research, all the visits we do with the child, um, to the judge. And that just helps the judge make the best decision. That, that's what we're there for. Um, so just that's a little remembrance, of kind of what we do and the value that it brings to our community. Um, the petitions that we have range across our county. I will say our higher number comes from west and north Montgomery County. Just to give you a little insight. And you will see also, I included our current budget. Um, we're still under 200,000 in operating funds, which is, um, I think really great for the amount of work that, that we are able to put into the, um, children's system. Um, and I'm happy to let Ryan share. He's our current president. And then take any questions you might have.
Charity, uh, it's a great program. Thank you for the budget too. It's the kind of budget we need.
Yeah.
And it's very detailed. And I appreciate you doing that. Um, I know it's a program that we, we have, uh, helped in the past and y'all do great, great work.
Sure. Yes, sir.
So it, we're not cutting Ryan off.
Yeah.
Is there any questions that y'all may have for charity?
I'm just curious, the salary for the administrative staff, is that all depending upon fundraising?
Um, if we can cover our salary?
Yes.
No, sir. We have enough, um, to cover that year by year. We've been able to raise funds, um, to cover that in a year in advance. Does that make sense?
But it's still fundraising?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah. It's a nonprofit. So, yeah, we have grant funding. We have, um, federal funding. Um, and then of course, we have a good bit of fundraising as well.
Any questions for Ryan or charity?
Tell us a specific ask to that.
Um, so we are asking for an increase to 15,000. You guys have graciously given us 10 for our first few years, but as you can see with our numbers. So just to give you an idea, we are currently advocating for 180 children in Montgomery County. Um, there's 350 total. So our goal is obviously to create, you know, enough volunteers to have, um, paired with each child. That's just gonna take growth, right? We're gonna have to recruit more and train more. And so, um, we can't, like, I'd never want to get to a point where I have to tell a judge, no, I don't have a volunteer for this. And so we want to continue our growth. Um, so we are asking for 15,000.
Ryan, you want to say anything before I cut you off?
I would just reinforce that we have a very strong board. This year, we incorporated a junior board to bring in more energy. And that'll increase, uh, more fundraising efforts and, uh, just a super strong executive director and staff.
And I'll just keep it short. Well, thank you, Ryan.
I, I wanna, I just want to add too, I, I've seen what the, the product of this type of program in our community, you, we're talking, I've seen, uh, at, at school through families that have been, uh, granted a CASA, a court-appointed special advocate, a, a volunteer who has helped been, been an advocate for those families. I've worked with families who weren't able to get a CASA, whether it was in Montgomery or another county, and, uh, and how hard that has been. We have some volunteers on our staff and the experience. So what you guys are doing with the, the amount of money that you're, you're working with is phenomenal. And so thank you for continuing to, to service these young people.
We, we surely appreciate all of your support over the years. We wouldn't be where we are without you, honestly. You're, like, took our first meetings, right, when we got started. Um, when we started in 2020, we had a hundred dollars in the bank, right? And so you guys came in from the beginning. So thank you. All of these numbers, like, are, you, you're a part of that. Um, and we'll never forget that. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're taking.
Okay.
And we'll let you know something.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Charity.
Next, we have Frank Robinson, Nicole Thompson, and Jennifer Anderson with the City of Montgomery Small Business. This is a, wow, they're coming down. Uh, Frank Robinson is the new City of Montgomery Economic, Economic Development Director. Um, he's been here about six months. He comes to, uh, the city and honestly, the region from Philadelphia. So he and, um, yeah, he's an Eagles fan like, like, uh, like Michael, so. So no, they're gonna talk to us about the ARPA. It's, I say City of Montgomery, but it's the ARPA Combined Small Business Initiative that we both have going on. Um, so without further ado, Frank?
Frank, are you an Eagles fan?
I am an Eagles fan. I spent 10 years as the assistant chaplain for the Eagles. So I have a, a really, uh, deep affiliation. But thank you for the introduction. Good morning. I think I've met most of you, but again, my name is Frank Robinson. I'm happy and honored and proud, uh, to be recruited, to be, to be the new Economic Development Director. I just want to say in opening comments, I want to turn most of my time over to, to Dr. Nicole, uh, who leads our S.B.O.S., um, initiative. But, uh, we at the city and you at the county, you know, we share a, a similar goal, knowing that through economic development, that will not happen if we do not strengthen our small businesses. If we don't have the resources, uh, to help them, to, uh, give capital and all the things that go along with that, uh, we won't continue to grow our city and our county. And so we are proud to partner with you with that. And we know how that important that is. And I would like Nicole just to talk about some of the work and just give a little bit of, o- more of an overview of what we're doing right now.
Absolutely. Thank you all for having us again this morning. Um, as Frank noted, um, we, in collaboration with the city and the county, have been operating the Small Business One-Stop Shop since May. When we started in May, we started a kind of virtually because we did not have a physical space, but we did see clients in different areas just to make sure that we could meet their needs. This was a seamless transition because as the lab on Dexter closed or transitioned out, um, we already had some brand awareness there as far as working with small businesses. So it was not hard for us to pivot and for the community to understand that this program was funded by the county and the city. So we worked hard to make sure that small businesses knew who we were, what we were doing, and what this new program offered. And in essence, it's a one-stop shop. Um, we know that it can be hard trying to start a business, to stay in a business, and to grow in a business. So we worked with our team to put programs in place from various surveys that were done. Um, what, what is the community need as a small business owner? And we heard access to capital every single time. Capital was the issue. Um, but we also knew that a lot of the businesses needed to be bankable. They needed to have their books shored up and to understand their documents. So what we've provided you this morning is with a progress report that speaks to what we've done. And this is the data. We've served 301 clients as of March, I'm sorry, as of January the 7th. We've had 36 in-person visits. We've sent 955 texts, um, 10,000 plus emails, and 600 plus one-to-one support. That means 600 hours of working with a small business owner or someone from that business entity. Um, 1,142 event participants, 2,284 engagement hours. And to say it lightly, we have been busy. Um, our priorities are community awareness. We do not believe that you build it and they will come. The business owners will just flock to us. In December, we opened our physical space. Well, we are actively out in the community going door to door to businesses via a strategy so that they know that this service exists. Some of our training looks like, um, marketing, how to scale your business via your marketing efforts. Um, our monthly mixer is very, uh, very popular. Commissioner Sankey, you've visited those a couple of times where they can hear from other business owners. And we have a time to collaborate, to dialogue. And then on alternate months, we bring in a resource provider. That's a bank. That could be someone that offers grants, different entities. So we're trying to cover all of our bases and really make sure that our foundation is solid for our small businesses. Um, and I want to show this short video, which I want to say is about three minutes, less than three minutes, maybe 45 seconds, just gives a recap on some of our work this year.
Dr. Thompson will make sure commissioners have opportunity to ask you any questions.
I want to buy your house. I can pay you cash for your house no matter what condition it's in.
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I was just curious. Um, of course, I have attended a few other workshops. I particularly found the one on import-export.
Yes.
Very educational. I, the job support, can you elaborate a little bit on that? And you mentioned access to capital was one of the primary, uh, concerns that the small business or the would-be small business owner, uh, had. So how much capital have you provided to businesses, if you're able to answer that? And what type of job support? Can you be more specific about that, please?
Sure. I'll speak to access to capital first. So we do not provide capital at S.B.O.S. per se, but what we do is work with small businesses and hopefully get them to a funnel and also prepare them. So we know that, um, access to capital is like number one, but are you ready for capital? And are your documents ready? Are your, um, legal corporations and how you have filed your business, all of those things ready? So those are the things that we are helping support. And we're also working, um, under Access Montgomery with a funnel, with part of this funding to get businesses to capital. So that's where we are with the access to capital. Um, as far as job supported, 101 jobs supported as of this report speaks to those individuals that came in and said, I don't know how to train my employees on customer service. I'm having an issue. We know that customer service was one of the top issues that a lot of small businesses say, I cannot retain people. How do you train them? What are those common skills that they need? So some of those hours are included in the job supported and also connecting people to resources. And so we try to keep up with the data on every single point because we know that these are federal funds that support this, um, project and this initiative for the community. And so job supported has been a very key. And we can also provide you with a breakdown of all of the types of ways that we support these.
Is this part of the small business from the, uh, ARPA money?
Yes, this is our.
Commissioner Harris?
Are there any, any efforts to, um, develop, uh, relationships with resources, uh, investors, bankers, that type of thing, so that in addition to what you're doing to make sure, uh, that they have their ducks in a row when they apply for these, this money, uh, have the, the providers actually that are willing to listen.
Yes.
And, and have the funds that are available for, for a small business.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Uh, Jennifer and I are actually on a tour now, talking with our banks and our investments to do exactly what you just said, to, uh, create this, another pipeline into that. Uh, we, Hope Credit Union has been a part of that. And some of the banks we, we are, are working with now. We have a number of banks that, um, we talked to two already that want to, um, use CRA credits to help, um, to get that. So we're working on kind of what that will look like and working through some of the, um, logistics of that. But you're right. Uh, so what Nicole and her team is doing is getting them ready, but we're also working, uh, to, once they're ready, uh, to make sure that they have the pipeline into that. And so that's making sure that all the, um, documents are lined, uh, all the taxes are done, and all those things are happening. But we are, uh, working right now a strategy, uh, to get that capital in. And, um, we've had some successful conversations, but now we're kind of moving into, all right, how do we implement this? And that's, that's just, uh, that's something that we're gonna be working over in the next couple of months.
I, I, I think you want to be the type of organization that, when, 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 when you, when you approach an investor, like, uh, you, or one of your, uh, one of the businesses that you're, you're dealing with, approach an investor, and they know that you, they've gone through training with you and talked to you, then, then the, the odds of them getting, being successful are up.
Yes.
You know, they, they, they know that, uh, an outfit coming from you has been trained and proper and have their paperwork in order. You know, and they're, they're gonna be a good risk. Uh, so, you know, I, I think that's very important. That's what, uh, we've run into in trying to, uh, we have a small business initiative. And the big complaint about that among the business people is, yeah, you got these contracts, but we can't, we can't qualify. We can't bond. We can't do this. We can't do that. It's great that you're getting them ready to be able to bond and get them in that kind of shape, but what about where you're gonna get the bond from? That relationship and knowing that they, they, they have their ducks in a row and they're ready, that'd go a long way, so.
Yes, sir. And we, we agree. And we are excited. And when we talked to the banks, they were excited about that. And we actually asked, um, really specific, uh, information to make sure that we're connecting them to what they need and their requirements and make sure that is all there. And also, if you haven't, uh, visited, we would love for you to come to the Crest Building.
Yeah, I haven't. And I'm sorry about that, but I will.
Yeah.
I've, I've, I've heard that, that you're doing great work.
Yeah, so we, we want to curate experience. And when we took the banks there, they were really excited about that. And the way that businesses come, uh, we're really excited about how it was curated because when people come, uh, they believe right from the start, uh, that something's gonna happen. And also the banks believe. And so we're, we're looking to use that momentum, but we're moving forward. And you're right. And we're working towards that as well.
And, and I'm certainly, uh, impressed with the preliminary part of how you get a business ready to do business or to allow them to function more efficiently and effectively. But I was just curious to whether or not any of the money allocated through the ARPA funds would be set aside to provide capital if and when the business is actually ready to go.
That's a great question. So, um, if you remember, the ARPA funding was split in two, right? And so you had Gateway, which is S.B.O.S., who runs the technical assistance. The other half was split into Hope Credit Union. So what you'll receive in a couple of weeks is an amendment to that contract. Because what we had to do was go in and clean up the language because it is a pilot program and we've never issued funding to small businesses. So what we learned along the way is that we had some language in there that was preventing that access of those funding. So that's where the big bulk of what you're looking for, for that capital being released is sitting in. And so today, I think, it's going to city council and then we will bring it back to you guys. So we just had a legal consultant look back at it again. So that funding will be issued probably starting in March, we'll be able to release that. But as you might recall, also, we released about 105,000 in November to small businesses. And that was our first concept of playing with grants to them. The second concept, uh, with Hope Credit Union will be actually loans that have forgivable portions to it.
Any other questions? Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate it.
Mediator Carlton Avery with Avery Mediation Services.
Good morning. Good morning. How's everyone?
Good morning.
I'm Carlton Avery of Avery Mediation Services. Uh, our office and firm is located here. We've, uh, we started about six years ago and, uh, we began getting federal trained and we've. and we have currently over 200 hours of ADR training, which is Alternative Dispute Resolution Training. The state only requires 20 of those hours, so my partner and I have, I have 200, my partner has about the same, nearly 400 hours of ADR training. What we do every single day is we resolve disputes outside of court throughout the state of Alabama in nine different counties we're serving as of now. And every morning we leave, or three out of the five mornings out of the week we leave, and we realize that we're going to another county, but we don't do much here. We've done about 200 cases here through landlord-tenant dispute resolution, but we don't do much at all here. What we are intending to do is create a program here to do the same thing. We have resolved no less than, there's thousands of cases that we diverted from courts throughout the county. So we were in Lee County, Dallas County, Perry County, Wilcox County, Marengo County, Jefferson County. We're literally across the state. We're asking to make an appeal to Montgomery County to do the same. We understand there's a landlord, there's a program that's with the Jones Law School, and they're only temporary. So I've talked to their executive director, we would like to collaborate with them to actually help train because we now have a curriculum that has been checked off by the Alabama Alternative Dispute Resolution Program, which is a state-regulated program that gives us the authority to do training. So we're able to train on every level of the state. So we're asking the county to allow us to do the same here, to start a Montgomery-based conflict resolution program.
Are you a part, Carlton, any part of the violence prevention program going on now that we are funding?
We have, we've made appeals to them over the last year or so, and we are not, to answer your question, and we differ tremendously from that program. I'm not frank, to be frank, I'm not sure how that program relates to what the state regulated. We're based on the state regulations, so if we're ever sent to a court case that involves domestic violence, for example, there's a state statute just in place in which you have to have certain screening protocols in place to do that mediation. So we've obtained all of that, domestic relations, even as it relates to landlord-tenant, there are certain restrictions you have to, or qualifications you have to have. You can't just come out and say, I'm going to sit down and talk to you all and resolve your conflict because then you put yourself in, you have vulnerabilities and liabilities in place. And so we have checked off every box that is required by the state, and like I said, the state only requires it at the minimum 20 hours, we're at several hundred hours, including federal training. So when there's a federal dispute or there's a strike that may be happening, they would dispatch mediators like myself and my partner that would resolve those conflicts to prevent it from actually going beyond where it needs to go.
Do you normally work through the court system, is that how it's normally worked?
About 90% of our cases are court-ordered, which is great. We actually now also have some community dispute resolutions initiatives in Dallas County, for example, that are not in court.
So you're looking for community?
Yes, sir.
Have you got any information to Kendall, if you want to get that to him?
I will definitely get, so get it to Mr. Anderson.
Any questions?
I was just curious, I guess you've already answered the question, you're looking for community-type engagement.
That's correct.
Do you, anything that you do where you see that might benefit the county?
Yes, tremendously, so we could, we see a lot of, what we've done, we've done some work in Dallas County, and we've used a lot of their religious leaders and some of their community leaders. People that are just common Joe Blow gentlemen or individuals that have impact. And so we can teach them the way to resolve the conflict, then, of course, we can turn around and also use them if that issue ends up going to court, it can be ordered to then resolve, and then it's resolved from the community. We see, what we see in the community and the court system is indicative of what is going on in the community. There's no filter, so if something is going on in the community, it's going to show up in the court system. Right now, what we've been seeing is that there's a tremendous backlog of cases. And so we understand that getting funding from certain entities allows that entity to also be competitive in additional bidding for like restorative justice grants that are out there.
I thought maybe you had something that could benefit county employees.
Yes, same, so as it relates to employee disputes, yes, county personnel disputes, we've done a tremendous amount of those in Dallas County as well. We would love to bring that same initiative here, that's a part of our training as well, is that we understand there's a filter in certain grievance processes that would have resulted on this level as opposed to letting it get into the court system as well.
Thank you, help Sheriff Cunningham and my disputes anytime we got.
I would love to sit down with you and Sheriff, yeah, absolutely.
Well, Carlton, thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Please get that information to Kendall.
I will, thank you.
All right, 9:57, we're going to take a three-minute quick recess and be back at 10 o'clock.